Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 9th. We're here at the Council on Engineering for a joint meeting with the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee. Our guest presenters this evening is representatives from Old Colony and the consultants who are helping with the school building committee facility. Is there a motion of the Board of Selectment to open the meeting? Selectment's moved.
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor?
Hi.
From Kerry's. Take a quick check.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is a joint meeting of the Board of Selectment and Finance Committee. It's Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, and we are all here to discuss the Old Colony new construction project. Do I have a motion to open our meeting?
We move.
So good. All in favor?
I agree. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and videotaped. Please rise for replies. Thank you for being here this evening. And this is going to be one of many, many meetings by this group here, not only to town officials, but to town residents. Keep in mind, Acushnet is one of five communities in the district, so apropos that, Aaron and the team will be in Lakeville when they leave here at 5:00 PM. And so the point of this meeting really was to provide the public and the Finance Committee, you know, a download of what's taken place essentially over the last two years. As you may recall, town meeting approved money to a facility study to determine, you know, what path Old Colony should go forward with, to address the building status and the needs of the school district. Just by way of background, I've served on the Building Committee, really more in advisory role, just to kind of give a sense of the pulse of the town and what's going on. In my role, I had two real selfish objectives sitting on that Building Committee. One is to make sure that enough scrutiny was given to additions and renovations, to make sure that that option was explored as the first option. That doesn't mean it would be the right option, but at least based on past practice in the town of Acushnet, again, we're one of five communities, but based on past practice, what we did with schools, it looked, there was additions and renovations, and so that was explored. And number two is to make sure that what was put forward to address the needs, I don't know how to say this, but that they weren't looking at a Taj Mahal, right? I've seen it in other communities, in other school districts, where people start getting like, almost on like happy gas, saying, "Well, we need this, and we need that, and we need this, and we need that." And so the one thing I can attest to is that the representatives of the Building Committee, in Aaron and the School Committee, really made sure that what is being presented addresses the needs and the needs only. And so that's all I'm going to say, is just offering that insight. We have Robbie Bones, who is our School Committee representative, who also serves on that Building Committee. I've asked him to say a few words, to give his perspective. I don't know if you know Robbie, but he's got an extensive background, vocational education in the trades. And then Shirley, who is from Rochester, is our, is the School Committee Chair, but also the Chair of the Facilities Committee, and just an unbelievable person, so I wanted you all to get to know her, if you haven't met her, and then we'll turn it over to the team. And so Chairman Boucher, I don't know if you have any thoughts before we turn it over in the presentation, unless you, I think, maybe ask questions at the end, if that's fair?
I sent out an email last night to make sure that our committee had a chance to review the presentation that was sent to us. I took a look at it, and we'll definitely have some questions prepared after they give their presentation.
There is a lot of information, but again, this will be the first of as many that needs to take place for town officials and the residents of Acushnet to have a better understanding of what they'll be voting on. November 18th is the day that was selected. There'll be five elections going on in one day, but with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Bones.
Thank you. Hi, buddy. I'm happy to be here, and I'm honored to be a School Committee member. I actually want to speak a little bit about the process and where I'm coming from. Vocational education did my thing. I graduated from vocational school, three sons graduated from vocational school, and after entering the trade and working in this community, I decided I wanted to pursue a career in vocational education. Did that, for decades, until my retirement a few years ago. But in that time, I got involved with a number of MSBA-funded projects for renovations, new school builds throughout the community, and served on accreditation teams and all that. So it's a really involved process, and without echoing anything that David had said, I found the process to be very thorough. There's a lot of boxes to check, and they checked them up to this point, they've checked them. And I was impressed with the opportunity for it to be inclusive for everyone involved, all the players, right down to the students, the students and the staff, family members, were engaged in different activities to determine where we're at, where we need to go, and how to get there. I said that fast, but it's not an easy task, you know? They had these different activities, but one in particular I'd like to speak about is our Advisory Committee. Now, for folks that know, I'm going to be telling you an old story, but for the folks that don't, it's interesting to know that the school meets twice a year, with an Advisory Committee for each department and a General Advisory Committee for the school. And the function of that is like, for them to see what the school's doing, how they're doing it, and also to provide some input on ways to keep it current with industry needs. Their advisory board and committees are comprised of business leaders, parents, a host of O-tech grads, many generations of grads, right? And town officials. Now, they're there, they don't get paid, they're giving back, but in a sense, they're paying forward too, because a lot of those folks are hiring our kids, you know? They're putting them to work. And, you know, this has been our experience, I've seen it. These kids get back out into the workforce, and they're making a good wage, and they're contributing to the local acuity by buying, you know, building homes and bringing up their kids here and paying back, you know? I'm just going to say, from my standpoint, that's part of the reason why I want to live in a town like Acushnet, you know? And a little bit more than 50 years ago, you know, a group like us was faced with a similar objective, to entertain the idea of that school that we're in. That's done a good job, it served us well. I've been in contact with that school through my whole career, in the next-door town, but the time has come, right? And, you know, if those folks looked at this as an opportunity to invest in the students and, you know, the future of our community, so I'm grateful for that. I have more to say later, but thank you, thank you all.
All right, Shirley.
Hi, I'm Shirley Burke. I am a School Committee member from the town of Rochester, and I'm currently serving as the Old Colony School Building Committee Chair. I come to you first to say thank you for this opportunity to meet with you, both FinCon and the Select Board, and with your Town Administrator, Mr. Kelly. One of the things I just wanted you to understand is that this has been a long journey, over many months and many long hours. The process has been collaborative throughout, that's something that I take a lot of pride in. It has been rich with data collecting, data interpretation, thoughtful deliberation, and David had made a comment that he had two selfish interests. Those are not selfish interests, those are his fiduciary interests to the town of Rochester, and I think every member of the Subcommittee came to the committee understanding that we needed to look out for the greater good of our students, but the good of our communities as well. David and Bob have already told you that they're members. I want to acknowledge two other members that reside in Acushnet. Al Amal is an Acushnet resident, who is a vocational teacher at Old Colony, and Neil Regis is an Acushnet resident who is in the construction field. I think everybody from the downtown of Acushnet has been thoughtful in their deliberations, respectful in their conversation, and I think they have served both the town of Acushnet and the Old Colony District with pride. To that, I'll turn it over to Walter.
Before we do that, Shirley, one thing that Shirley's sort of calling cause here, and we have a meeting, before we do any discussion or deliberation, she asks that we take a moment of reflection to, Shirley, would you do that for us? I just think that's such a nice touch, and more boards should do it, it's just a great way to start off a meeting.
It is a tradition at Old Colony that after the Pledge of Allegiance, there is always a moment of silence, and I always ask people to, instead of stating what the cause should be, I ask you to, whatever resonates in your heart, that you spend that moment thinking about it, and your actions be truthful. It's as simple as that, but thank you for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Walter from PMA, who are project managers.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Walter Hartley with PMA. I'm the former project manager for the Old Colony School District, also a resident of Rochester. With me tonight are Chad Crittenden and Nick Hall, also from PMA, and Tina Stanislavski from HMFH, the designer for the project. So just to give everyone an update on the MSBA project, as Shirley mentioned, we've been ongoing, or this project has been ongoing for many months, almost two years in fact, if you go back to when the statement of interest was submitted, almost three, four years ago and accepted. So right here, you can see, we've worked our way through almost a two-year process of feasibility study and the schematic design. We are now at MSBA's Module 5, funding the project, and that's where we're going to be able to bring you the information that's going to allow the people to make an informed decision on November 18th. We'll talk about detailed design, construction, completion at the end of the project, sorry, at the end of the presentation, which is, this is where we are at, MSBA Module 5 of D. Really, the two submissions that happened during the feasibility study are the preliminary design program and the preferred schematic report. That's what helps the district narrow down its options. We ran scenarios from base repair, addition renovations, renovations, new constructions on multiple locations on the site, at any viable location that we could come up with at the School Building Committee. That led to almost 42 options being studied in various scenarios and enrollments. It was further refined in that preferred schematic report, done to about six or seven options, where the Building Committee made its final decisions to move on with the preferred schematic and the schematic design. That was accepted, I believe, in February by the MSBA Board of Directors, having fulfilled the requirements of those two submissions, to move forward with schematic design. We have culminated the schematic design, and with that, we're ready to present this information to you. So just a detailed look at MSBA's Module 4.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Aaron Plank, and I'm the Superintendent Director at Old Colony. I've been with the school for a decade, for a decade now, and we're celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. I'm also celebrating my own 50th birthday later next month, so I'll turn 50 with the school. This is just a quick overview. I wanted to share that Old Colony is more than just a school, we're a partner in service, a resource for workforce solutions, and a destination for community-centered outreach that benefits all generations. Over the years, Old Colony students have proudly supported our communities in projects such as building COA sheds, construction at the Acushnet COA, both outdoor and indoor parts of the facility, as well as Rochester COA. We've installed electric car tracking stations for the town of Acushnet. We've constructed the Carver gazebo and Carver Junior/Senior High School concession stand as recently as this year. We reconstructed the Loompon Lodge and Ingestment at Ten Williams Camp and Lakeville Town Offices. We renovated the American Legion Holy Ghost grounds and Dunce Gardens in Matta Hoysit. We've supported the Plum Library in the upcoming Rochester COA addition, and construction of conference tables and fire stations in a majority of our member towns. In addition, please know our cosmetology students are a fixture at all of our COAs. We also have a destination-based location at Old Colony, called, those are just a few. With the proposed addition of plumbing and HVAC programs, Old Colony will function as a fully integrated construction workforce, providing greater benefits for our towns and for our taxpayers. Our vision for the new school facility is to create a modern facility designed to integrate vocational activity and learning, while empowering our students with voice independence and the opportunity to respond. The overview for today, we want you to understand the current state of Old Colony, we want to provide an in-depth overview of our current state and future plans, we want to provide an overview and timeline as it pertains to the MSBA grant program, and we'd like to answer questions pertaining to our vision moving forward to protect the investment of our five-member towns. Should we run out of time today, please know we will schedule other meetings so that we can answer questions. We are also available via email, my email, for anyone watching, is apolansky with a Y at oldcolony.info, and if you have questions, we will send you answers. We want you to know that this has been created to be a transparent process. Old Colony was founded in 1975, so our doors have been open for 50 years. We're in our original building, and I wanted to show you some pictures of the original building. These are also available online at our website, www.oldcolony.us. If you click on the MSBA button, there is a transparent list of everything that has happened for the project in chronological order, and you'll be able to follow the project extremely closely. We're currently limited by our existing footprint. We need to expand to provide eligible students with their preference for vocational education. We currently offer 13 programs. We have about 340 applications for 150 slots, which means that opportunities to be accepted to Old Colony are less than one in two. The other issue that we deal with is the state has just moved to a lottery, and that changes the dynamic of how we accept students. Many systems have surpassed their useful life, straining the operating budget as maintenance costs are increasingly added to our operating budget. The important piece to recognize here is that we've put a lot of things on hold with the knowledge that this is in the pipeline. It would be fiscally irresponsible to put forward capital requests if we know that those capital requests would only be short-term in nature. A building relatively unchanged from the 70s no longer serves the associated needs of current-day vocational education, and we'd like to expand our offerings, as we've stated in the areas of plumbing, HVAC, and dental assisting, in alignment with labor market needs. This will create additional opportunities for students and will allow us to expand our current footprint while serving our communities in an expanded way. Demand for vocational education training is at an all-time high, and Old Colony aspires to provide vocational training beyond the traditional school day, collaboration with workforce partners, where we will also educate our adult workforce. This is an overview of some of our maintenance needs and upgrades. Installation of security doors has taken place. We've improved a 40-camera security system, access to the control system, we've retrofitted the interior and exterior lighting, replacement of overhead doors, we've added to our welding shop in 1986, which was needed, and we've had upgrades to our septic system in 1991. Within the last decade, we had a grant-funded installation of new security doors and an addition of cameras through a security grant offered by the state. We also had our students do an overhaul of our lobby. It used to be a brick-covered lobby that carried from the outside into the inside. This work that you see in the main picture was completely, was done completely by students, and we're extremely proud that all of the departments came together to do this work. Unfortunately, the construction of a new building cannot be done by students. There's more to it. Currently, electronic engineering has no storage, our workspace is limited, we have small shared space for two grades, square footage for the two classes, and that is inadequate. The machine and tool technology, student work areas are congested. If you look at this machine and tool technology classroom on the right, and were to compare it at a more up-to-date location, you would see vast differential between the two locations. These are, this is a snapshot of our Old Colony, our Old Colony programs, and the square footage in each program is compared to the state minimum per pupil in square feet, and you can see that we are below the minimum in every category, and that is very problematic. We're preemptive for space. Existing conditions are certainly in need of an upgrade. An office supply closet was cut in half to house a student interventionist. Sorry, this is on auto, for some reason. School psychologist uses a closet housed on the back of the stage. Our athletic trainer provides services to student athletes in what used to be the custodial supply closet, located at the rear of inadequately sized weight room off of our gym. You can see sinks on the wall with leaking drains behind the masonry, where they had to be disconnected. We have grease traps and fasteners that have rotted to a point where they no longer seal. And a floor drain in our culinary arts department is blocked off, it's one of several inoperable floor drains. We attempted to snake that drain recently, and we pulled out dirt, which means the infrastructure underneath the floors is in need of repair. Unfortunately, we would have to jackhammer floors in order to repair those pipes. The water for the building is supplied by a bedrock well several years ago. Bacteria was detected in that well, and we had to do some work on the well. Our water tank, this says 46 years old, but this slide was made during feasibility, it's now 50 years old, and this water tank is in need of replacement. We have not made a choice to replace the water tank, that will be done immediately, well, that will come with a new building if for some reason, a new building were not to come to fruition, this is one of those issues, another issue that would have to be addressed immediately. We do not have water redundancy, we do not have fire protection. We're in talks with the town of Middleborough, try and pull water from Middleborough at the Any Maxim House, all the way down North Ave to Old Colony, so that we can have redundancy and fire protection. That will need to happen regardless of the nature of this project. Restrooms do not meet ADA requirements. The lab, the laboratory ratio for female students to male students is not equitable. There are three men's rooms, two women's rooms. To access the women's room, female students in their non-traditional shops have to walk twice the distance of their male counterparts through the building. This is our gym floor that continues to lift. This affects gameplay and poses a risk of injury. The floor is in need of complete replacement. Epoxy floors are separating and repaired as budget money is allowed. This is an ongoing issue. Patches are shown in the photos on the left and right, just to give examples of this. Carpeting is beyond its useful life, is replaced as funding becomes available. Approximately 10% of the building still has rug in dire need of replacement. Our HVAC controls, we don't have climate controls in certain shops that require climate control, including graphic arts, machine and tool, our head-end room. We need sophisticated equipment, but we have sophisticated equipment, we need more sophisticated HVAC to match the needs of that equipment. And our server room is utilized, utilizes a portable AC unit to temper air and dehumidify space. Closet was repurposed to house the facility main servers and other IT equipment using access control and CCTV system. We've recently moved our servers to a cloud model to help alleviate this and increase the security. Our driveways and sidewalks are in disrepair. Our aluminum double-pane windows are original to the building, the seals are failing on those. Our doors are original to the building, hardware thresholds and frames are problematic and require frequent repair. Our masonry is splitting, we have issues with step cracking, rubber deterioration, and spalling, and potential for water infiltration. And our parking is insufficient, stormwater drainage ineffective, apartment lots flood sometimes to a depth of 10 inches, some lots do not need accessibility requirements. This shows a steady record of our enrollment, and again, I'll reiterate that we have over 300 applications for 140 to 150 slots every year. That trend continues. We understand that resources are finite, we know that our district members and our citizen taxpayers will need the relief of the MSBA reimbursement order in order for this to be successful. We are advocating at every level to try and ensure that we have support on a financial level for our five-member towns. I will be speaking before the Senate on September 30th as part of the educational piece, to ask for increased MSBA funding for our member towns and for vocational school construction. And the rationale for that is very simple. If the cost to build a vocational school is more than that of a traditional high school, and we can alleviate those costs for our member districts, the reallocation of that savings can go to the local schools. So the savings that will benefit our member communities and also the vocational school construction can be rolled into investments in our sending district schools, which means there's a mutual benefit for all parties involved. That conversation has taken place at a multitude of levels. It is actually a legislative priority for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and for the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. So now what we're doing is we're bringing that legislative request in front of our legislators to ask for further support to alleviate the costs of projects like this. I want people to know we're not sitting quietly and hoping, we're working actively to make this happen. That concludes my part of an introduction and our why, and I'm going to turn it over to Tina Stanislavski of HMFH to talk about design.
We started a little bit late, so I don't know if we can, I don't know if we have five, but we have a little bit over time. Sort of make sure that everybody has a chance to digest the information. You guys have any questions?
I can go through these quickly too, and if you have questions.
Yeah, I think at some point we'll want to get to the design, but also just get into the numbers.
Absolutely. So this slide is just talking about the visioning process that we led through with the school, with the educators, the students, members of the community to come up with the program for this new school. And out of that visioning session, we came up with the goals for the educational goals for the school and the facility goals for the school, and those were very important because all of the 42 options that we developed were weighed against those goals, and that helped the committee make a decision on which option would be best. So we also looked at multiple enrollments. The MSBA, which is the funding authority, gave us a range to look at. 560 is what they have now, all the way up to 810. And so 728 would add two programs, the HVAC and plumbing. 776 would add dental to that, and then 810 would add biotech. And in this new school, they ended up going with adding three new programs, so they're adding HVAC, plumbing, and dental assisting. The school is arranged around clusters, and so each of the programs falls into a cluster, whether it be business, health, services cluster, manufacturing and engineering, or We also had sustainability goals, so we want to make this building sustainable for the future. We want it to be low EUI, which means low energy use. We want it to have water redundancy, as Aaron spoke about. We want to bring in natural daylight into the shops, that will cut down on our electrical use. So all of these things were important in the design. This is a chart that we put together to weigh all of the different options. Like I said, we looked at the facility goals that we developed during the study and also the educational goals. We looked at the different populations, and then we ranked them, and you can see, the new construction option ended up being the most viable. I know we studied renovation addition for quite some time, it's difficult in vocational schools to do that because there's no swing space. It's difficult to find an auto shop for the students to use while the auto shop is being renovated. So going through all those, you'd have to, you know, move people around the school, and it was very challenging, and it made the construction process much longer than a new build, and longer construction needs more money. The site is beautiful, and it's quite large, but it's got some restrictions on it, and there are also some things that MSBA doesn't pay for, so they cap your site costs. So we worked hard to maximize the grant that we would get from the MSBA. Some of the things we looked at, you know, demolition isn't reimbursed. If you wanted to buy a new site, the cost of buying that site wouldn't be reimbursed. If you had to use the open space that's next door to the school, you would have to go through an Article 97 process, which could be a very long, extended process. So we looked at all the pros and cons of the site and where to put this new building or to add on to the existing building. Again, there's just, there's a few other constraints there. This is North Ave here, there's a gas line, there's a historic cemetery, there's bernal pools, and there is an existing well on-site where they get their water. We looked at multiple options. If you add it on to the school... If you added on to the school, we could add on directly behind it. You can see the cost range for those options. The new option would be built between the existing school and the bernal pools. And you can see the range on those options. And then if we decided we would build on the fields, you can see the range for that. We ended up not going in that direction because again, for economy's sake, if we don't touch the fields, we don't have to rebuild them. Therefore, it's a less expensive project. So this is what the new school is going to look at, look like. It's got a lot of green space around it. It's got multiple wings for the different clusters and it's arranged around a central pub space. There's the site plan of the new building. The red is where the existing building is currently. And we're building right behind it between that and the wetlands. We are also adding a new entrance off of North Ave. Right now, there's only one entrance. And so for security reasons, you'd like to have two ways in and out of a site. We are creating a new main entrance here. The service cluster, which will be hospitality, culinary and auto will all be up front. So we're able to easily park and find those programs and not have to wander through the school like you do right now to get to them. We are going to provide places for outdoor dining for the culinary and also for the students when they're at lunch. We're providing a large work yard that the manufacturing and engineering cluster and the construction cluster will share. And we're also providing some athletic space outside of the athletic wing and a direct route to the fields. And a little bit more parking closer to the fields. If you bend to that site, it's a long way to walk when you go to the football fields. So this is an image of what that new school will look like. The front will be the parent drop off. The main entrance is here. Again, this is culinary. Hospitality is here and then auto is on the end. You can see the work yard shared by those clusters there. And this is from the backside looking, if you were in where the bernal pools are, looking at the backside of the building, which is mostly the classrooms, which are paired up with the shops. So these are the floor plans, the map for the new building. As you can see, I was talking about the main entrance. You come in here and you're in a student hub. That will have the auditorium, the cafeteria. It will have access to the media center on the second floor and then a direct line out. The buses will drop the kids out from the back of the school and everybody can meet in the center. As I was saying, businesses here in the front with the school store, culinary, hospitality. There'll be visitor parking here. This is the manufacturing and engineering wing and automotive that folks can just drive their car in here. The construction cluster is in the back and then the gymnasium is over here. You have the ability to lock down the wings so that if you just have an event in the gym after hours, you can securely do that and folks can't get into the rest of the school. The concept behind the floor plans is to have the academic classrooms adjacent to the shops. Currently, they're in separate wings now, but the thinking is really to have that sort of cross pollination between the academic classes and also the hands-on learning in the shops. So the school will have two stories. Some of these spaces here are the big shops that have two stories. That's why the ax is in them. But we will have classrooms on the upper floor that look down into those shops. So kids will be able to see what they're doing in the, in the construction cluster. The upper top would be auditorium is there, more science labs. And then we have graphics, computer science, architecture, engineering, electronics, as well as the health careers, which is adjacent to the gym. So a health and wellness suite. And this is just a quick sketch of what that new entrance may look like. We're thinking about durable materials, economical like brick in this new building. Now for the money.
Want to start it?
Yep. So as we mentioned, the MSBA is the funding partner for the project. A lot of red tape to jump through with the MSBA. Their funding process is highly specific. They have cost caps. They have ineligible's. Recently, and we'll get into it in two slides, but the MSBA reimburses six hundred and, five hundred and eighty-six dollars a square foot for eligible construction costs. So there are ineligible's. As Tina mentioned, if you demo on a site that you're not building on, the demo would be ineligible. We are demoing on the site we are building on, so therefore that demo would be ineligible cost. The MSBA also has site work caps of fifty-nine dollars a square foot. So when you work those two together, you end up with eligible cost per square foot reimbursement of six hundred and forty-five dollars per square foot. And we'll get into the reimbursement rate as well. But the MSBA board is constantly looking at this and we have a couple of slides on this as well to show that they, they have tried to adjust, but just note that the MSBA does want to fund as many projects throughout the Commonwealth as possible. They want to have as many buildings be updated as possible. So it's not just trying to fund all projects at a hundred percent. Right here, this is data from the MSBA's website. They update it on a monthly, a bi-monthly basis as they have a board of directors meeting. So what you see on the far right is the group of schools that is currently going through the MSBA process right now. A few of them would be on the board of directors meeting for October for approval of schematic design pending successful votes. But what you can see moving back, these projects all the way back to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and you can see recently the very high increase in cost of construction and specifically in school construction. What you can also take away from this is that the project team here is targeting a very cost-effective school. We have some data to show that as well. But you see Lexington up on the top there, Berkshire Hills up in Western Mass. That is also another tech school. Something to note here is Lexington is just a regular high school where technical high schools do tend to cost more per square foot because of the specialized equipment, because of the larger spaces. And you see that Old Colony is targeted as cost per square foot and project cost below the averages and who's in pipeline right now. Specifically highlighting that eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars a square foot post the value management exercise that was worked through on the MSBA. Jumping back, the MSBA, as I mentioned, the green line with the steps you can see is their funding increases over time. So every year they look at their funding mechanisms, which are funded through one percent of the six and a half percent, one penny of the six and a half percent sales tax that goes to the MSBA to allocate to schools across the Commonwealth. They do from time to time look at it. So they did just up their reimbursement rate of eligible costs early, late last year. So Old Colony would be subject to that increase and we are accounting for that in the figures that we're presenting. So going, just grabbing a handful of similar schools, specifically technical high schools since two thousand twenty-three, you can see the increase in the spread across these. You can look at Tri-County Regional Vocet back in two thousand twenty-three when they went through schematic, they were at eight twenty-nine a square foot. We are also at targeting a cost per square foot of eight twenty-nine. Lexington High School, you know, they're, they're closer to Boston. They, they have some probably tough site, tough site that they may need to work with. They're upwards of a thousand dollars a square foot. So anything that this committee was able to do to drive this cost per square foot down, they're trying to take advantage of. We got to have some more information on that as well. So what that resulted in on the selection of the schematic, preferred schematic and where the estimates landed was two hundred and eighty-eight million, two hundred and eighty-eight point seven million total project cost. That is the entire project contingencies, furniture, soft costs, escalation, construction. That is the project cost that is being brought to the MSBA for approval. With that, the team has taken a look at the MSBA thirty-eleven budget sheet and tried to take as, as educated a guess as we can on where they're going to land for reimbursement. And right now, we're in negotiations with them. Those will be finalized before we head to the board in October. But we're targeting almost just, just slightly under a hundred and thirty million dollar reimbursement from the MSBA, leaving just slight, just under, just over a hundred and fifty-nine million dollar district share between the member towns of the Old Colony Regional School Districts. This will be formalized on October twenty-ninth by the MSBA Board of Directors pending those negotiations. Breaking that down further, this is just showing those and the entire project cost. So right here on the left is the thirty-eleven budget sheet, the total construction cost. So not including soft costs and contingencies of two hundred and twenty-six point one million. As we're working through this project, we have a pending successful outcome in November. There will be three other design phases where we'll have professional estimators, one on behalf of the architect, one on behalf of the OPM, locked in a room for eight hours going through the design, making sure that we are on budget. So we'll have a design development phase, a sixty percent construction doc phase and ninety percent construction doc phase. And we will be tied to the construction cost and the total project cost that is approved by the MSBA in October. We cannot submit to them. We have three more submissions to them after schematic. We cannot submit a dollar higher to them at any point in time, nor could we ever pay more than, than those funds without ever going back to the town for more money, which we never, ever want to do. That's why we try to capture every piece of the project upfront. So as we mentioned, the two hundred and twenty-six million construction cost, we, within that, we try to escalate out and our estimators try to put numbers on what they feel that the bid environment is going to look like when we get to the time of bid. We have that number captured here. They both came to an agreement to capture that number. We also capture design and pricing contingency where a schematic design level drawings, the architect hasn't finished the full set. We know what the scope of the project is. Final details come through DD sixty percent and ninety percent drawings. Over on the right, you see the lower portion of the MSBA budget where we capture the contingencies, the construction contingency, the onerous contingency. We have about seventeen million dollar, yeah, almost eighteen million dollars captured in hard cost construction contingency. That's about six and a half, six to six and a half percent of construction. We have about two point three million dollars in onerous contingencies for other various items, soft costs and delayed construction. And you see the total project budget of that two hundred and eighty-eight, seven forty-three, six eighty-three and the max total facilities rank that we're targeting. Again, these numbers will be finalized at the MSBA Board of Directors meeting in October. We wanted everyone to understand that the MSBA base reimbursement rate of, for Old Colony was also increased early this year. Every year, the MSBA takes a look at that base reimbursement rate, again, of eligible costs. It was recalculated, so we were originally carrying a fifty-four point one six base reimbursement with a fifty-four point seven nine increase from the MSBA earlier this year. Another couple of items to notice here are the one point seven bonus points, incentive points for maintenance. That's an attachment to the investment that the communities make, that the school facilities department makes and the school administration makes for the upkeep of that school. We were originally carrying one point two five average that we may see across. Old Colony achieved one point seven out of two. Really not numbers that we see a lot. We don't see a lot of high numbers, but it is an attachment to what the money, what the school does with the money that's provided them and what they have. You'll notice down even further below the four point, four point for energy efficiency. We'll talk a little bit about that as well. But what that results in is a base reimbursement rate with incentives of sixty point four nine percent, again, of eligible costs. So throughout that budget, there are cost per square foot caps. There are other just various ineligible, completely ineligible pieces that we capture in the budget as well.
Sure. So this is at the preferred schematic phase. These are essentially the finalist options. So the one that you see highlighted in gold there is where the preferred solution landed. On the far left side, that is what it would cost to repair the existing building. So the MSBA as part of this process makes us go into a very thorough assessment of that existing building, identify the systems that need to be upgraded or replaced, what it takes to bring that building up to code. That information goes from the engineers over to the cost estimators and the cost estimators perform a very detailed takeoff. It's all available on the project website if you want to poke through it. But where they landed, once you factor in soft costs, contingencies appropriate to repair, just like we did on the other scenarios, is that a hundred and thirty-four million. So the way that this graph is set up here, the bottom darker shaded are the district share and then the top path is what you would expect in reimbursement from the MSBA across each of those scenarios. The challenge with a repair and the MSBA, step one in this whole thing was the educational vision, right? So they have to develop this vision. They want to make sure that people who participate in the MSBA program are designing a building that fits their needs and not trying to back into a budget. That's one of the SBA, MSBA around two thousand and seven, big changes that happened. So they require you to create this vision, figure out where your shortfalls are and address them. Whatever project it is, they don't want you to come back in fifteen, twenty years and ask for more money, right? So in order to have a repair be eligible for MSBA reimbursement, we would need to be able to demonstrate that the repair substantially meets the educational program it needs the district. In Old Colony's case, their building is half the size of what DESI and MSBA guidelines have. They're not going to be, we can't get that building shoehorned into MSBA and DESI guidelines. So they're not going to participate in the repair of that particular building. They would however participate in the addition renovation. So those are the next two bars that you see moving from the left. So we priced those out. We ran a few of the MSBA's formulas. We said, okay, what does the district share look like if we're going to do this addition renovation? Addition renovations have a little more nuances. It changes the delivery method on the project. It adds some phasing, some complexity. There might be a little bit of swing space like Tina had mentioned earlier, when you're doing the auto tech shop, those students still have to learn. You can't just say, hey, this is home auto tech for two years, sorry. So you have to build a temporary condition or find someplace for them to go. Auto tech's one example, but then things like culinary, it's a full restaurant and kitchen. So you're really trying to temporarily house that for students while construction's on the way and multiply that by fifteen programs, right? You can see the challenge. So those with an addition renovation, vocational schools just don't typically play out a regular K through twelve, elementary school, middle school, high school. Yeah, maybe you can do it. Vocational, not really a great option. So then that brings us into the new construction options. So there were five finalist new construction options that were studied. These were across a variety of different enrollments, looking at different programs and the building committee taking all this into consideration. So okay, we don't want to go to the max because we want to be conscious of the sending communities and they have their own budget constraints. But we definitely have a need for each AC, plumbing and dental assisting. We have a demand in the communities, so we want to open up that opportunity. So they ended up at the seven seventy-six enrollment, which got them those three in-demand programs. At that time, NC three is the hundred and sixty-one million district share number there. So this is back when the preferred solution was selected. So it's come down a little bit, as you saw a hundred and fifty-nine million district share a couple of slides ago. What wasn't available at that point in time was we needed to go through the next step of design was what incentives might be out there. So MassAve IRA twenty twenty-two as amended by the OBBVA. We said, okay, let's look at systems. Where are the opportunities? So working with the engineers again and the estimators, we identified more than eleven million dollars in grant opportunity based upon the revised version of the bill that was just passed in July and then also with MassAve. So those two combined were another eleven million dollars that have come off the district's bottom line. So that effectively reduces the district share from that one fifty-nine to one forty-seven point nine you see here. The other big takeaway here, this line you want to cross, the gold line up top and the red line, I mean, that's showing what the district cost is to repair that existing building versus the cost to build new. So question inevitably comes up, inevitably comes up, or if we do nothing. Maybe we can get by five years, ten years, but it really turns into debt by a dozen cuts. That building doesn't have fifty years left in it. Maybe we can squeeze another ten, fifteen, whatever it is. But sometime over the next fifty years, that scope on the repair is going to hit the wallets of each of the five member communities. I live in the district too, so myself included. The new construction, MSBA requires that we design for a minimum of fifty years. So many buildings are designed well beyond that. But it's really, I think the building committee took the approach of rip off the Band-Aid, replace it, be good for fifty plus years rather than debt by a thousand cuts over the next fifty. So diving a little bit more into that eleven million dollars in rebates and incentives. So they analyzed a whole bunch of mechanical systems. These were the five finalists up on screen here. We mapped them out on a lifecycle cost analysis. You can see that on the bottom right. You can see the few little numbers, the green dashed glowing line there you see is the ground source where they ultimately landed. So ground source heat pumps are one of the things that did survive IRA twenty twenty-two under the OBBVA amendments. So really played out to the project's benefit and is a huge contribution to those credits that we are targeting here. Some system highlights, we do have solar in there. There's one point two five megawatts and the goal there is to get the district's operating cost right back to where it was in the pre-built condition so that they can mitigate that impact. There's an option to look at more as we evolve and design. The challenge there is really what the grade can handle. It would throw us into a nice and moving study. It'd throw us into a nice and moving study, those generally take years, so all of that needs to weigh into that decision if we're going to take that next step. But that will be studied during the next days of design show the project over. In the base scope, we do have a ground source geothermal system, so those are six hundred and fifty-foot deep wells, they don't pour water into the ground or take water out of the ground, it's a closure, it's one pipe, goes down the ground, comes back up. Those feet are fed into a seven hundred and fifty-ton ground source heat pump module, and then we do have energy recovery at the rooftop units, so we're trying to maintain as much cooler heated air dependencies that's already in the building. For backup systems, we would have an electric backup, oil electric. So the next step, so we have our costs, we have our budget, we can then go back and look at enrollment data, so right now the latest enrollment data we have is FY twenty-six, it gets updated in October of each year, so the new numbers will be out shortly, but don't expect them to do too much. You can see a cushion here, so the left pie is the MSBA grant amount, that one hundred and thirty million dollar number, the right side is that district share number, a one hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. And that's just simple math, that's how many students each sending community sends to the school. So the inevitable question is, hey, why is Matta boys only six percent? It's because they only send thirty-something kids to the school. So with all this information, we then cost-load our schedule. So Walter had explained earlier, the MSBA does cap certain systems, they cap their cost per square foot, there's a whole host of ineligible costs for reimbursement with the MSBA, so we need to identify where those are and when they're going to hit in time, and that's what this does. So the cumulative lines that you see there, there are three of them, the top highest one is the total cost, that two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. Next one there is what the district share is, and the bottom one is when those MSBA reimbursements would hit. The MSBA reimburses monthly, so the district doesn't need to borrow two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars and then wait for a check back from the state, they get reimbursed, and they have been getting reimbursed as the project goes on a month-to-month basis. You do see that, the green line there, flat lines towards the end of the project, the MSBA does stop reimbursement once you hit the ninety-five percent amount, because they want to make sure that you take your incentives. If you said you're going to build an energy efficient school, they're going to audit that, make sure you built an energy efficient school before the release of final cost. So all of this information goes over to the district's financial advisors, in this case, they were working with Unibank, and Unibank maps out a borrowing scenario. So if you don't want to borrow all that money upfront, then you're paying interest on a big sum, sum of money, the first year is really just design, so it's a, it's a very light hit, small cost, prepare to construct a new building, and see where it jumps up there and sort of construction starts. The idea is bands initially and then long-term bond once you actually get, like, a full head-on construction. So that information that comes, goes to Unibank, comes back in the form of a tax impact projection. So they say, okay, if we're going to pull a band next year, we're going to pull another band in twenty-twenty-seven, and then a long-term bond in twenty-twenty-eight, we're going to spread that out, level debt, here's what it looks like for each year member communities. So a few things to remember, these projections, one, we don't have the incentives in there, so the IRA twenty-twenty-two, OBBVA, ground source incentive is not in these numbers. The Mass Save incentive is not in these numbers. So right out of the gate, we hope to be more than eleven million dollars under what this projection is. The other big caveat in this is we have to assume that we're going to spend every penny. We hope that that is never the case, but if we're asking you to spend up to two hundred and eighty-eight million, we're going to run that in the numbers. Our experience recently has been that projects come in significantly lower, so AGF, HPA are on the Bristol Plumage Tech project. When we were in front of BP back in twenty-twenty-two, the number that they were presented with was a hundred and seventy-nine million dollar district share. Fast forward or rewind back about a year, that number's forty million dollars lower. So we hope to be lower and drastically change these tax impact numbers for the better, but going into this, we need to match what is essentially the worst-case scenario and that is always going to work with the committee to pull it back. Not far away, where we just wrapped up an elementary school, they had a district share projection of forty million dollars, they landed at twenty-five million dollars. I mean, that's, you can imagine what, how much that changes the district share projection when the project's actually completed throughout. So this information, I think it pops up on another slide, there is a tax impact calculator that's live on the project website right now, so if you go to oldcolonybuildingsproject.com, the top button has a tax impact calculator, you can look up your assessed values, it'll link right there, drop it in the calculator and it will give you your estimated tax impact. But again, keep in mind that no incentives, no rebates, spending every single dollar, which we hope is inevitable to set out over there.
So there are links to the assessed value locations for each of the towns on the tax impact calculator, please make sure to use those evaluations of your towns.
Alright, on to scheduling next steps real quick, so it's been almost two years of feasibility study on schematic design, making sure that every box is checked and that nothing is left unturned. Three submissions to the MSBA, the MSBA does very thorough checks with their auditors to make sure that, again, nothing is left unturned. They're partners in this, they're contributing a lot of money, so they also want to make sure that this is the most responsible solution that's being selected and put forth to them. So very recently, we met with town stakeholders to coordinate the November eighteenth validate, and we started our big community outreach, so we know the scope, we know the numbers, we want to make ourselves available. Last weekend, if you had made a sample pitch, because you saw some of the team over there, I believe it was importantly. But we are, we are here to answer any questions, so there is a method to the madness, the MSBA has definitely got this figured out, so the answers are there, you just have to, just ask, and we're happy to play any information. There's a lot of it on the website, it goes back two years, there's thousands of agents' documents, so if you can't find anyone, please just shoot us a message, there's a question maker on the website.
I know, I mentioned, we can go into overtime, take some questions if that's alright, so Chairman Boushey, if you and your committee, finance committee members have questions, please.
Yes, yes.
Again, this will be the first, we have to do this next week, the week after, the week after that, continue to do it, you got some questions?
One thing I'd like to mention to Aaron Bolansky is, last week, I had the opportunity with our select and public, town administrator Jamie Kelly, to attend a legislative meeting regarding our Cushing Elementary School issue that we're dealing with, the structural problems, because we need to do a fix there, much smaller scale, probably about four point two million, but we had two state reps there, Mark Sylvia and Stable Lepp, and also Senator Monticni was there. You know, who was asked of Senator Monticni, is there more money out there for, for that project, for the elementary school project? And he basically was not very hopeful with what he said, he said, you know, keep your expectations low, we'll do the best we can to try and find some additional money for it. But again, we need to be realistic about it, and I just feel like a lot is going to fall on us, you know, for that project. So I wish you luck, you know, we said you're going to be speaking to the Senate to try and get more, more money from the MSBA, I hope you can, you know, do whatever you can to try and push that up, because it's going to help us here.
They did just release a, release a hundred million dollars for vocational schools to apply for up to a two to five million dollar grant for expansion purposes, so Old Colony will be submitting a request for an additional five million dollar grant for, for expansion, but again, that's a competitive grant, we don't know what the outcome of that particular request will be. But our advocacy efforts have landed in a way that, there, there has been some response, but I think you never stop, to your point, you never stop asking, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on FinCon, any questions? Sue, you ready for a good question or two?
Generally. So is it, is it fair to say that if we don't do the new school, it's going to cost the member towns a hundred and thirty-five million dollars just to bring the school up to code? Did I hear that correctly?
I don't think that building has another fifty years left in it, I mean, that's in today's prices, so it would be escalated based on when you actually check off the purple boxes, right?
So the way I look at this, so we're looking at one thirty-five versus the one forty-eight based on these latest numbers?
Essentially.
Okay. The other thing that I think would be helpful is, bigger school costs more, do we have a sense on what the best would be for the member towns just on annual carry costs? How that, that's going to compare to what it used to be?
So from the utility costs, a lot of that was mitigated through the ground source and the kids, so that part of it is pretty well-known, the other piece is staff, of course, right? So additional programs, doing additional staff, I know that district had run some preliminary numbers, so turn it up, Sarah.
I don't sweat the nudge today, but I think that would be helpful information also for the residents, so we understand what the all-in cost is going to be.
Yeah, so we've mapped out basically what it would look like in a quarterly, or I should say a four-year capacity, because what you'd be looking at in terms of growth is a four-year increase. The first class of students would consist of sixteen, sixteen, and sixteen, we'll call it, plumbing, HPAC, and dental, and we'd have to then look at the carryover into the academic areas, if that makes sense. So in years one and two, the academic teacher increase will be in the one to two teacher per subject area, and then in years three and four, another one to two teachers per subject. So it's a considerable increase, I think over a four-year period, we had estimated a potential, I don't want him to speak, I'll have to, I'll get the document, and I'll be able to provide it, we can even post it online for you.
That would be awesome.
But off the top of my head, I don't have it memorized, but we do have it all graphed out.
That would be awesome, thank you.
Yes, there will be increased chapter seventy as well, Shirley just stated, so the reimbursement that we get from the state comes with the increase in students as well.
Unfortunately, we know that normally doesn't cover it, so.
No, it doesn't, it didn't, it does not cover it. Anyone else on FinCon?
Yeah, I, I got a quick question. We're talking about the increase in schools, the number's going to be seven seventy-six, is that correct? I'm wondering, based on the membership towns, obviously by the figures, Cushing has no students going, so Cushing's going to be responsible for the lion's share project. On these new students, will a Christian be afforded the benefit of lion's share of those new student enrollment? How does that work?
So with the introduction of lottery, that's a great question, we've seen trends historically that allowed us to project, and anytime we went beyond, let's say, a ten-student increase, I immediately pick up the phone and I'll call the town administrator and say, in October one, just so you know, you have ten or eleven additional students, I wanted to let you know as early as possible so that you can plan for the next budget cycle. We'll still be able to do that, but they moved from what used to be a competitive process to a lottery. So that lottery takes away some predictability, and we're working through the intricacies of lottery right now to try and examine how we can make that more predictable, because the other downside to that is, if you were to pull, let's say, an inordinate number of students from one community, the impact on that community is unfair financially, but we're waiting for feedback around whether or not we're allowed to use, let's say, a three-year average to set a base lottery number for each town, which we think allows the municipality to better predict what could be coming, if that makes sense, and then to draw the balance of any seats that are unfilled from a general lottery, if you follow that?
Yeah.
But it used to be that students, if you had a legacy, and you, let's say you had a son or daughter who attended, and then you had a younger sibling who wanted to attend, if they got in or didn't get in, it was on their own accord based on merit. The new system is unpredictable and they're not honoring legacies or anything of that nature, so that, that makes it very unpredictable for families, do you follow what I'm saying? It's almost like drawing ping pong balls out of a bucket and saying, well, here's where this particular student comes from. What we want to propose is that you draw a ping pong bucket, bring ping pong balls out of respective towns and be able to use a three-year average to create a predictable number for those towns. We're waiting for answers.
Well, that's all, that's, that's all being worked out.
That's all being worked out.
There's no resolution to this yet.
We don't even have the resolution, because the lottery was literally announced recently through legislative. You're welcome.
Sorry, I have one more question, kind of piggybacking off of whatever it says. Is the allocation for the towns set this year? So say in twenty years, a Cushing is ten percent, are we still locked in to pay thirty-five percent of the costs because that is what we, what it was when we entered into, or that's going to change?
That's a great question, so that's annual, any capital is going to be annual, ninety percent of it is your enrollment, ten percent of it is your K through twelve population. So that's in our district agreement and very clearly identified, and so that's how we establish the capital.
The numbers that you read, put on the board, are these, are this, that's not, I'm assuming not set in stone yet, but is that a pretty good, solid number that we've been?
These numbers?
Yes.
Yeah. So the, the assumption there, it's a thirty-year bond at four percent?
Well, if anything, it's going, like, if we're talking about the incentives itself, so that number actually may be down.
If rates improve, which has been the talk, then yeah, the number will come down, or if you don't spend every penny, or the rebates come off that.
Can you ask one or answer a question?
So if you leave that chart out, and you look at what Rochester is, a hundred and sixty-one dollars per quarter, how is that the case if there were only fifteen percent of the population right now and Lakeville's twenty-three percent, Lakeville's number's a lot shorter, how's that, how's that breaking out?
It's their tax level, so it's all based on the DLS data, so what their total residential levy is, but Rochester's doesn't have as much taxable. Yeah, they have zero commercial, so it's really all residential, but it's a bigger share of their existing taxable, and that's why the increase is higher proportionally.
Seems kind of, seems kind of skewed, how that's breaking out, right? I mean, it's, Rochester's a very, so a Cushing is roughly thirty, I think you have thirty-seven, I can back it up to thirty, I have thirty-five, I have thirty-seven. Central, I think, either they have thirty-five, thirty-seven, close enough, and we would be paying one evening, and Rochester would basically, I think I said sixteen percent is their population, fifteen percent? So how do, I, I think, how does that, I don't understand how that works out with their assessments so high relative to their percentage of kids going to the school?
I suspect it's less households that are covering more students per household.
Rochester has a minimal commercial backspace, truly a CNS, that Rochester looks at, you know, they have multiple commercial entities.
With more tax codes, right? That's what you're saying.
With more tax space.
At different rates.
Yeah, how we value it.
I see. So to get back on, I think Sue's question and Eric's question is, that's the cost of construction, and if all the numbers stay the same, and we know that there might be some, a few million bucks bearing in here and there, but if, based on the numbers that you've given us, it's a hundred and eighty bucks, comes out to seven hundred and twenty dollars per year for a Cushing attached, we have, right, per household? But that's not true, because that's true for construction costs, but as Mr. DeGatto and Mr. Nwens referred to, is the number of teachers, so if you add three shops, and I know it's kind of transitioning, because you'll have freshman year when you have the first shop, that's why you said maybe one teacher for sixteen, and then the second year you have double the amount, and then until you get to four, four years, you're at full scale.
Yeah.
If you're doing that and you're accommodating that many more students, then you're also going to add academic classes, because you're going to, you're not going to be taking five hundred and fifth, right now, or around five hundred and fifty total population?
Five sixty-two, yeah.
Somewhere around there? So you're probably, if you're looking to up that to, I don't know what the number is, just call it six hundred and fifty, add a hundred?
A more than that. Their end game would be seven seventy-six.
So if you're going to jump that dramatically, you're looking at probably, what, four additional academic teachers?
Probably, at the end game will be two to three at the end of the four-year period?
Academic?
Per, not total.
Because you got, you got.
Let's say English has five, or four, at the end of the increase over four years, English would have six.
That's what I'm saying, so in every category, you're going to add another teacher at the end of the four-year cycle, right? So if, again.
Or maybe two, just to be fair, like, you're being generous, but it could be two, right?
If that's what we're going to call me as generous when I say one additional classroom, so you're right, it could be two, depending on how many more student population, I mean, you can't have forty kids in a classroom. So if you just, if you just up it by, you know, one sixty, four is forty kids in a school, that's not going to happen, we know, it's going to be bigger. So you add, just call it five teachers, right? The average cost of a teacher right now at Old Colony with benefits, let's just call that a hundred grand, that's five hundred thousand dollars, then you have each shop, right? Back when I was in school, you had a minimum of two shop teachers and one related teacher, right? So you're talking three teachers per shop.
Or maybe two in a pair, yeah, absolutely.
So, so you're at nine there, plus your five, right? You've got fourteen new teachers, that's one point four million dollars roughly, depending on where you're hiring costs, I'll be, you have benefits that go along associated with it, so average hour is going to come out to about a hundred K per, so that's one point four, that's going to be assessed to the, the five member communities, again, we being thirty-three, let's just make math easy, thirty-three percent, that's an additional five hundred thousand dollars, just. additional five hundred thousand dollars, just budget impact to the town of Kushnet. Is that fair to say?
Are they going to use the Chapter Seventy offset too?
Yeah, and another, we're not, there's not two hundred additional students in the region, they're going to school somewhere else, right? So it's not necessarily that you're adding operational costs where two hundred students don't exist, they're just going, whether it's Bevford or Fairhaven or RR, whatever it might be.
You might not be tuitioned.
Yeah, but my local school's on adding two hundred more students, just my high school is Old Colony. So if we're taking a percentage of that again, right, I'm going back to that one-third, I'm looking at total cost, one hundred, one point five million, where a third of the school is five hundred thousand dollars for a third of the school, which we have been pretty consistent with, to be honest with you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, back in the earlier days, we were as high as forty-something percent of the school.
Right, yeah.
So again, it's, it's a five hundred thousand dollar hit, just operational budget to the town of Kushnet, let's just call it.
Sig that, no, no.
It might be four hundred thousand, but for the sake of discussion, minus Chapter Seventy funding, you ain't getting that much money, as Mr. DeGato referred to, as Chapter Seventy funding to offset that, right? So, I mean, it is, it's, it's ginormous, just in an operational standpoint. For us, we don't have, from what our experience is, we're cutting all the time, where are we coming up with, let's just call it four hundred thousand dollars, right? So it's an automatic forced override, basically, to make budget. And what's really convoluted about that is what happens when you talk a little bit about it, where it's a variable, where every year things are going to change. So how do we, as at our any community, the five member communities, even think about trying to budget that number in? Like, we don't just, we can't just say, okay, worst-case scenario, all in, that cost plus the school operating budget, it's an extra million dollars to the town of Kushnet as an assessment, right? You can't just override a million dollars, because one year, it could be one point two, one point three, it could be seven hundred thousand, right? The variable, and the worst, when we, if we drop in population, the other communities suffer, right? Because now those, those costs have gone up for everybody else, right? So if we say, just, we don't have kids going to Old Colony anymore, whatever the case may be, the other member towns now escalate. So it's for anybody to try to plan and budget for this, over, how many years you projecting the bottle for this?
Thirty.
Thirty years.
Yeah. It's a very, it's a very difficult task.
Dead-excluded fund, so it's not in certain operational override. Each year is captured under the dead exclusion vote that is taken with that one.
But that's still a massive, even under a dead exclusion, you're still carrying as part of the levy, and it's still a massive variable for us to be playing with tax rate. That's what every community is going to be expected to do. Based on whatever that number is in any given year, that variable, if it shifts five, ten percent, the tax rate's going to be gyrating all over the place. There's, don't comment, like, you, if we could do it, and I'm not saying we can, but if there was a, like, a more of a common way calculation to do it, where you could better plan?
That's what we're working.
And give people a number and say, you know what, this is the number that we're always going to use, but from what I know, because I've been part of Old Colony in two thousand five to ten, I was liaison for the budgets, and I know how that variable works. And sometimes when population drops off, you might not be doing five fifty, you might be doing five hundred. That changes that number, well, we'll just go with not that number, the assessment number that for budgeting for every community. So one year, let's use the low guy, Matt Apoys, that person might be funding a hundred thousand dollars to Old Colony's budget. When population drops, if the majority's coming off the other member towns, Matt Apoys could now be paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Old Colony's budget. That's, that's a massive variable, that's two and a half times.
There's a lot of, there's a lack of predictability right now with admissions, the way it currently stands. We're looking to increase the level of predictability with the way we move forward with the lottery. But even now, we don't have predictability beyond our October one number, and that's when we basically will call and say, "By the way, your October one number is plus X or minus X." So that's the best way for us to communicate, even historically, because historically, you never really knew where your admission pool would come from. But you're right, there is a lack of predictability, and that was when Eric asked, or when Sue asked, that's where we're coming from in our attempt to create predictability on a municipal level. And when they went to lottery, I echoed your sentiments, and I said that to the commissioner. For our municipalities, they need predictability. With the, with the admissions process, we saw patterns, and we did. And you, you've seen the list, right? But you make a, you make a valid point.
Bob, are there any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Most of them were actually already asked, so I just want to get some confirmation on the ballot vote, November eighteenth. Just to confirm the way this would work, set up as a simple majority, total, all votes from all five member towns.
Correct.
Fifty-one percent says yes, it's a, it's a go, correct?
Correct.
Correct. I only asked because I had a lot of questions asked in regards to that, wondering, and this is just to answer the people that asked me.
Sure.
If the town of Kushnet is responsible for thirty-five percent of this, how is it fair to ask our residents to not be worth thirty-five percent of the actual ballot vote?
So I can explain the process between the sixteen D and the sixteen N vote.
Right.
If you go with a town-by-town vote and it fails, you then go to a majority vote, because otherwise, the feasibility funds, if you were to ever revisit a project, in either model, are not paid for. The MSBA will not pay for feasibility a second time. However, if you have a delay between the first vote and the second vote, what you're looking at is escalation of about eight million dollars, if that's correct, in that timeline because of the delay and inflation. What we said was, if we knew that if the town-by-town vote were to fail, and then we'd go with a aggregate vote afterward, but at the expense of eight million dollars, we don't want to play a game and pretend that that first model would work, because it's disillusioning to people. They might think, well, that failed, we're done. And the school would have a fiscal responsibility to revisit it so that they wouldn't re-enter into feasibility at a later date to further escalate the project. And what I mean by that is Minuteman went through this process, I think for eleven years, where they tried to get their building up and running, and the cost kept increasing for Minuteman until they finally got the yes. But the cost to build a building eleven years later was so dramatic, so much more, that basically, the only winners in the end were the people doing the job because they got paid more money. What we said was, don't waste taxpayer money, don't put on a facade that if this vote were to fail in a town-by-town that you wouldn't go forward with a second vote, because that's disingenuous. Just cut to the chase, and the outcome is the outcome.
Wasn't Berkeley, wasn't there an issue?
That was with the debt exclusion, because they voted against the debt exclusion, but they voted for the school. So what happened was, they had to revisit the debt exclusion, but the debt exclusion is not the responsibility of the regional high school, the debt exclusion is up to the town. So, you know, we believe the right thing to do is probably vote a debt exclusion, but that can be revoted. But for us, a sixteen N, sixteen D model is a really important consideration, and we didn't want to play games with taxpayer money. It just didn't seem like the right thing to do. Does that answer your question?
It does. I do have a piggyback question.
Sure.
For that, and this is, once again, being directed from lots of community members wondering, we've talked a lot about information that we don't know yet right now, and we're trying to fine-tune some numbers when it comes to operational budgets, like Mr. Gasper alluded to. This could have a drastic impact on our operational budget, which will cause cuts everywhere outside of town, or a possible forced override on the operational side. So not only debt exclusion vote for the school, but an override to run an operational budget. Without having all the details, why are we voting November eighteenth and not waiting for spring?
We can get into details, I just don't have them memorized.
Okay.
So we have details, I just don't have them memorized.
One piece, I think would be helpful, was raised tonight, was, is there a formula based on reimbursements? If your, your reimbursement rate now is based on five hundred and chain students, and if you're at seven seventy-six, you know, what's that number, I think, would help, right? We have that information.
Are you talking about Chapter Seventy?
Yeah, Chapter Seventy. What the increase, based on today's numbers, which are not great, you hope they'd be better, but this way, I think that might be helpful.
Right, what would an operational budget in today's numbers look like if we were, let's say, seven seventy-six, and Kushnet were still thirty-five to thirty-seven percent of the population?
I think that would be very.
Is that, is that?
That would be very.
We're talking override, override. We can run those.
Very, very helpful.
But we don't have all the.
Correct.
All the information.
Well, then, that's why it comes into conversation, because we don't have all the information. Are we going to have to expect this in one year, two years, three years, or even four years? Having those numbers, like, it's like we just said, so we can say, in year four, this is what the increase, based on today's percentage, or our allocation, thirty-five percent, would represent to the operational budget.
Sure, we can run those numbers, and we can make a public point.
The other piece too, I guess, you know, from, just something that we need to think about, just the ultimate, is that we don't have a high school, so we tuition out students, right? So we have an obligation, some, some education, right? So if the numbers, the number of students who had an interest in going to Old Colony increases, what does that do to the tuition that we're paying out, right? It's less that we're paying to Bevford, less that we're paying to Fairhaven, less that we're paying to, you know, Old Rock.
Whoever. Correct. That was Chad's point about the.
Whoever the school committee decides to engage with. So I think that's a piece of the equation as well.
Absolutely. That's my point.
All, all that, all that really is, is a shifting of money from the Kushnet public schools budget, they carry that intuition from Bevford and Fairhaven. So if we're paying twelve thousand dollars, which is arbitrarily speaking, and twelve thousand dollars for Fairhaven, and Bevford High, and Old Colony's at sixteen thousand, so I believe you're right, roughly Bevford Kushnet right now is around sixteen, somewhere around sixteen K. So the difference is the additional four thousand dollars on each student, right? You still have to look at that big impact operational.
Right.
And there's no way in hell, being what we've been through in the last couple of years, and FinCon knows this, is this, we don't have an additional four hundred or five-hundred-thousand dollars of operational money, and we can just go on top of the increase of three or four hundred already and go, here's eight hundred thousand dollars, I mean, we collect in this year, I think in prop two and a half, the increase of five sixteen four. So with that number being said, pretty much everything's gone, you have new growth left to play with, and you still have K through eight schools you have to fund, police to bound, provide, lots of things that are like, there's not any money. So it is, no matter how you cut and slice this, it's an automatic forced override for operational, the budget alone, let alone the debt exclusion, if that's what we're going to call it, for the building, to, to build a building, right?
And that's, I think those are all points we need to bring up, but my point is, we need to, you know, have a fuller picture from an operational standpoint. The mission of this group was to address the need. Each community's going to have to do a gut check on, you know, the voters and say, yes or no, and it is what it is. The result will be what it is, but the mission was to provide, to try, to put forward a project that addresses the need, and ultimately, the towns will decide if they address it they need to know.
Exactly. Well, thank you. There are no.
Yeah, of course. I don't want to rush anybody, but we.
No, 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 this, no, this would be quick.
We'll have to shoot out in about five minutes, just to get to.
So, yeah, no, this would be quick. So, I'm not sure, are we under, like, some kind of contractual obligation to say, we can send this many students, where, say, Matt Apoys, it only gets this many?
There's no.
Like, we can turn around and say, okay, can we put a cap on the amount of students that gets sent, and then increase the cap for the other communities to help pay for this?
Right now, we cannot, because we've had conversations with the commissioner around quotas, so to speak. And with this lottery system, I'm still waiting for answers around whether or not we're even allowed to establish an average for the drawing of the lottery. But that, to your point, would be as close as we could get to that, and that's what I'm trying to work on, because if I can get a yes, again, it allows us predictability.
Because the other thing is, the school committee, I believe, is entertaining other schools to send our high students to, I believe it was in their last meeting.
Right, four different.
There may not be that many more kids going to Old Colony. They may opt to go to some of these other new schools that the school committee is looking at. So, I mean, if we can turn around and say, okay, this thing's going to cost so much money, okay, well, they're going to go to these other schools, that's supposed money to you guys from us. You know, it's opportunity for the other towns to step up and help pay for this. So that's just my thought. And also help predict.
Historically, money follows students, right?
Yeah.
Aaron, I don't, I don't think with school choice nowadays that you can deny a kid an education at vocational school, right?
I think you're right, right.
We can't, we can't just look at the eighth-grade students and say, we already have too many people going to Old Colony, we're not going to allow twenty-five more to go to Old Colony, it's part of school choice, and I don't think you can deny a kid a certain education. If they have the capacity to take students from any one of the district member towns, I believe we have to fulfill that obligation if we have students that want to go.
Well, that was true.
Right, and I think that, you know, politically, I think that's a disaster, because you try to tell a parent that wants to put their kid through a vocational school, we can't do it because costs are going up too much. We will find out that reality number, what the, the hard hit is going to be, it's not, it's not soft hit, we got to figure out what that is, and that's what I think Mr. Wano was describing, is what is that number going to be, as best as we can predict with them, and say, this is what we can try to predict, what your tax bill's going to go up, and whatever the budget's going to go up, we already know, like, all you folks know, you've been doing finance and plugging up, there's no more money. So there's a, when I keep talking about that forced override, that's just for operational side of the budget, on what they're doing, and regardless of, they go from five hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty instead of seven hundred and fifty, once you build those shops, it don't matter if you have ten people in that shop or twenty people in that shop, your teacher base is still going to be a teacher base, right?
Aaron, we can still talk about it here, you know?
I want to extend this offer, is we will come back, we want this process to be much like our budgeting processes, that is, an open book, line by line, whatever you need, please let us know so that we can provide you with that information. I know that several people sitting at this table and at this table have been a part of our budget process, which we like to have as an open book, and when people articulate concern, we try to do our best to work.